Yep. All right, just a minute, let me.
Good evening. Hey Bobby, can you hear me? Can anyone hear me?
I can hear you, Rob.
Ah, there we go.
I can hear you.
Great. Trying to get the Facebook to work. Facebook livestream, so that's what I'm working on right now.
Hello, Rob.
Hi Dave, how are you?
All things considered, not bad.
We'll take that. I don't understand why it set up a waiting room. I really don't want anybody to have to wait. I just want everybody to join. I don't want any waiting room. Everyone can just come in. Alright, there we go. I'm probably gonna have to try this again. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Ted.
Hey, how are you, man?
Good, good.
Got another minute or two before we start. I'm seeing if I can get the Facebook Live to work. It is so far being not cooperative. This has happened before, so I'm not all that surprised. I'm gonna mute myself for a minute. So I'm gonna try something here. If by chance it screws up the meeting, just wait for the link to open back up again, but I don't think it will screw things up. I've done this before, but just as an FYI. And there's a lot of background noise in there, so make sure your mic is muted, especially if you have other things on the background such as televisions or radios or whatever. Let's see what happens if I do this. I didn't blow up the meeting yet. That's a good sign. Am I still sharing the screen for the agenda?
Yes, you are.
That's great. That way you're not all watching me log into Facebook with my password. There we go. Okay, we are live, I think on Facebook. I have a live stream up. We are at 6:03. I am going to call this meeting to order, so hopefully the live stream catches up. I'd like to do a quick roll call. Let me stop the share so that you... I'll leave the shared screen up so that you can see that. A quick roll call. Bobby?
Here.
Kevin? Okay, Craig?
Here.
Deb?
Here.
Vanessa? Emily?
Here.
Okay, so I have no Kevin, no Vanessa. Also from the Village. Attorney Andy Gohcrust, are you here?
I'm here, Rob.
Attorney, environmental attorney Dave Engel?
I'm here.
Okay, great. Thank you guys very much. I'm down. We're having some technical issues with our laptop for our... For Marie, so I am kind of trying to do everything at once tonight, so my apologies. I have a thousand screens I'm sharing here. We are going to get started with the special meeting here. The first item on the agenda are a few announcements that I want to share regarding some changing guidelines. And I'm gonna share these real fast, so bear with me for just a moment. There are two shares that have happened recently that I think were actually quite interesting to note. One second here. The first is related to something that has come up before, and it's our trick-or-treating question that we had. New York State just recently released some guidance for trick-or-treat. Is that shared up right now?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm sorry, I don't have... I can't see the livestream for some reason on the Village page, so I cannot monitor things actively.
Your Facebook is up now.
Oh, it is up? Fantastic. No one's not loading up here. Alright, thank you. So I just wanted to highlight this. Sorry, I didn't realize the Facebook was up. I just wanted to highlight this because this has been a question that has come up before. The governor has... And Department of Health has put out some guidance. These are just guidelines. They are online, they're easy to find if you do a quick search for Department of Health near state Halloween. It basically addresses some creative ways to celebrate Halloween while also adhering to social distance guidelines. It's two pages. There is nothing that is legally requiring or binding, but there's a bunch of suggestions on how to do things in a sense virtually or within a small unit, like with your own family. How to basically try to do trick-or-treating while still maintaining all the various regulations. Andy, I know you reviewed this as well. Is there anything else in particular you wanted to highlight?
Rob, I did not. I think you summarized it properly. These are guidelines issued from the Department of Health. They do, in my opinion, try to apply the protocols for mask-wearing, social distancing into the trick-or-treat or Halloween season. And they are just that, guidelines. And the second page has a lot of proposed do's. If you're gonna go out to trick-or-treat, here's some things to try to comply with, and certainly things that the state is saying you should not do or avoid. So, Rob, you summarized it properly. These are guidelines, and the state is not telling you to trick-or-treat or not trick-or-treat, but if you're going to, here's some guidelines to try to follow.
Alright, thank you, Andy. The second share that I wanted to offer up to you is related to new CDC guidelines, and it's not specifically just guidelines, but there was a pretty key definition change that has recently happened that I think is worth noting, and it has been catching a fair amount of news related to this. So let me share this as well. So, this is on the CDC guidelines. What they did is they changed the definition of a close contact. I'm gonna highlight... This is right off of their webpage right here, but I'm gonna highlight this paragraph right here. What is changed is the definition of a close contact, and it specifically says someone who is within six feet of an infected person for cumulative total of fifteen minutes or more for a 24-hour period, starting from two days before illness onset, or for asymptomatic patients, two days prior to test specimen collection until the time the patient is isolated. This, from what I can tell, I know, Andy, we talked about this, so I'm interested in your thoughts as well, came from some research that was done by the CDC and the Vermont State of Health where they discovered that there was a situation in a prison where one particular person had a bunch of small exposures that added up to over fifteen minutes. And even though the exposures were very quick and they were spread out, but they were within over a 24-hour period of time, ended up passing COVID, and this became a new concern. Andy, do you want to add anything to that?
No, again, Rob, you summarized it properly. That is the change on the CDC definition of close contact. Previously, it was one continuous fifteen-minute period of exposure. Now, it's a what could be a cumulative total of fifteen minutes over a 24-hour period. It's to address those intermittent exposures that over time could accumulate to that fifteen-minute exposure within 24 hours. That's a fairly significant change as to who would be included within any kind of protocols for quarantining or self-isolating or self-monitoring for symptoms.
And I just wanted to notice that trustees, because as we head into the fall/winter seasons, if we ended up having a positive case, we know, within one of our departments or within Village office, this would make it much, much more likely that it would sort of take everyone out into quarantine mode. I know on my normal job as a teacher, this will change a lot of how schools handle this as well, so I think it's just worth noting that, and it may lead to some other discussions that we have about how we're handling things here. Trustees, anything you guys want to comment on or mention about that? Okay, I'm gonna stop that share, and we are going to move on to the next portion of our meeting, which is our discussions related to the two Greenway proposals. Who's a prefer Greenway Trail proposals? We have on right now, I think, is that Ted? And anyone else from BNL?
On to here.
Awesome. Ted, Don, thank you guys very much for joining us here.
Yeah, Ted's gonna lead the discussion from our end. Yep.
Alright, the board has the two supplemental group proposals. If you guys want to take it away, Ted, share what you can. I don't know which one you want to start with. Go for it.
I guess we'll start with the easy one, which is the north trailhead at Sewer Plant Road. The site has changed significantly a couple of times now, and that's one of the problems. We had to redesign the plans, the preliminary design plans a couple of times. The good news is that we have design approval now, and we can move into final design and construction on the project. So what we need to do moving forward, first of all, is because we don't have a good survey map of the final work that was done by the railroad, and it appears that it kinda pushed over into the village property that we were originally using for the trail development. We'd like to get the Village surveyor to get out and just stake out the design plans that we have right now. And if they need to change, then we can incorporate that into the final design. So before we do the final design, we just wanted to take what we had on the preliminary plans and get that staked out. So that's a separate cost that wasn't in our supplement, and then to take it through final design, that's sort of the cost that's involved that was in the supplement. We've been coordinating with Dave Weiss from Wiley, and he's aware of the needs. And we can sort of continue coordinating with him if the Village would like to get him out there to do that work. I confirmed with our representative from... He's not DOT, he's a Parks DOT liaison for the recreational trails program, that the additional costs for that supplement can be part of the grant. So the Village would only be on the hook for the 20% local match for that. And because the Village, DPW is gonna do the majority of the work, probably that work will probably wind up being the Village match for the project.
Ted, could you, just for clarity, so, because that was one of the questions I was gonna have, was how much of this can get rolled into the grant? This supplemental agreement is for $12,500.
Correct.
And what you're thinking is all of this can be covered with the grant and our 20% local match will basically, in a sense, remain unchanged?
Correct. So the 20% local match would be the worst-case scenario. We'd have to pay 20% of that $12,500.
Okay.
There is a chance that you will have excess local match from the DPW doing the work to build the trail, which in which, in which case, the entire amount would then come out of the grant funds.
Okay, Neil or trustees, any thoughts, questions, or Andy, of course?
Just since this will be done, when will the actual work? When are we planning on doing the actual work?
We'll have to adjust the schedule. We're obviously not gonna be able to do the construction work this season, but as soon as the surveyor can get out there and stake out the design, we'll need to go out in the field, verify the locations, and then make adjustments to the final design. We'll get a set of bid documents ready, even though it's not gonna be bid. We have to do that for DOT's review. And that can all happen probably fairly quickly after the survey work. So we could probably have the final design submitted to DOT in December. And then, you know, it's gonna take them a month or so to review that, so we would be looking at probably being able to do the construction work first thing in the spring.
Alright, and again, you said the extra survey costs were, would be an additional cost that the Village would have to pick up?
Correct. I did not include that. Let me just double-check here. I don't think it's gonna be a huge amount. I can, I will have David Weiss get a proposal together and send it to the Village. I think it might be under a certain amount. I don't know if he's on a term contract with the Village, or he just is called upon to do work for you.
He's just called upon as someone we know and trust when survey needs to come up.
Okay, I'll get a cost from him.
And would those costs also be able to come out of the total funding of the grant?
Yes, they would, yes.
Okay. Trustees, Andy, any other questions? If not, I think Andy, we're looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign on to this agreement supplemental number one.
That's right. Yep, it would be a motion to, yes, authorize the mayor to execute supplement number one to the engineering services agreement with Barton and the Judas for the Huzick River Greenway Trail North Extension and Trailhead.
We'll make that motion.
Thank you, Deb. Need a second?
Second.
Second. I'll give it to Craig, since his internet is clearly faster than Bobby's. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Sounds unanimous. Thank you very much. Did Kevin or Vanessa join?
Kevin's gotta work late from now until the national election.
Yes, he does. Okay.
Yes, he does.
Alright, great. Alright, thanks, Deb. Okay. The second agreement here, the second supplemental agreement. Now, this one is a little bit more expensive, extensive. Ted, do you want to take it away and explain things for us?
Sure, and please, if anyone has any questions along the way, just feel free to stop me. Been working with Neil. Neil started to do some work down at Waterworks Road, and we started talking about the needs for removing the debris. He, Neil, was more comfortable with actually bidding that. And so I naively went to our environmental specialists and said, well, we just need to bid that. Can you guys give me a price for coming up with construction documents? Which wound up being a big onion that we started unpeeling. So, we're gonna have to do some, some quicks, environmental studies of the debris that's there. Previously, we thought that some environmental study had been done before, or we were told that, but Neil doesn't have any documents to that effect. So, we're gonna have to do that, due diligence analysis. It's not a big deal. Likely that all of the debris will have to be considered hazardous waste, which is not a huge deal. It just means that it's gonna cost more to dispose of it. So if that is the case, then it's just gonna cost more to dispose of it, but we will have to put together a cleanup plan and look at the waste removal. There's also gonna be the requirement to document the removal of the above-ground storage tanks. There was also a record of the underground tanks, but we don't think they were at the waste treatment site, so our environmental folks are gonna have to go out there and make sure that there are no underground storage tanks. So that's the environmental kind of evaluation or remediation part of the proposal. In addition, because of this new work, we're gonna have to do, if Seeker was already done on the project, we were involved in it, but we're gonna need to do some revision to the Seeker if it was done, or a new process of Seeker review. We've already had our environmental folks out there, but we're gonna need to do some kind of desktop environmental compliance outreach. And some of the work that we anticipated doing might require a, an evaluation of whether a joint application for permit is required to do the two boat launches. And that's, if needed, our goal in the design, the final design, is gonna be to avoid the need for a joint application for permit and make sure that everything we do falls under the nationwide permit thresholds, which is a much simpler process. And that's strictly related to disturbance of the shoreline and any kind of impacts on the environment along the river in the floodplain. So then, the third item on the proposal is to actually prepare the contract. So then the third item on the proposal is to actually prepare the contract documents and drawings and put them out to bid. It would include questions and answers by our team for prospective bidders. And if we need to issue addenda, that would be included as well as we would attend a pre-bid conference at the project site for the bidders. And then after the bids are opened by the village, we would file that up with a review of the bids and issue a recommendation for the award. And then the final part of this was construction phase services, which would be pre-construction meeting. We're going to have to monitor for the removal of potential asbestos-containing materials onsite. And so then there's also a review of the monitoring plan. And, and then there's just probably a final punch list inspection of the work. So all of that initial task one and two, the environmental investigations, and then the secret compliance is probably in the range of about 11.6, or that's our proposal. And then to do the bidding and the construction phase monitoring is about 21,800. In addition to to that work, our liaison from the Office of Parks needs a meets and bounds map. We have not been able to find anything that documents the 42-acre parcel with meets and bounds. The reason they require it, and we're going to need the same thing for the recreational trails program, is because they encumber it with a conservation easement, so it's forever parkland. I'm not sure that it's in the best interests of the village to uncover the entire 42 acres that constitutes the parcel. So it might be better to have the village surveyor develop an easement map or do a subdivision of just the portion of that 42 acres that the, the park funding is making improvements on. So I can also get a price from, from David Weiss for, for that work. And I've got a sketch that I made kind of showing the outline of where the, the work limits will be for this project and would, we would just submit that to Danielle and tell her that's our meets and bounds for the project.
All right, thanks, Ted. I have loads of questions and I know that we went through, Andy and I went through a lot of this when we were looking at the unrelated Woodsboro bio program. We were starting to talk about all of the things that go along with demo and removal. One of the things I should have mentioned at the very beginning of this discussion is that this is all related to the end of Waterworks Road where the old water plant used to be that ended up coming down and we had to do a demolition because it was an unsafe structure and the remains are there and we had planned, you know, before 2020 started, before COVID happened, we had planned that our DPW, along with our summer help, would be able to handle this part of it. But obviously, everything changed in 2020. So I have a few questions about costs, but before I do that, Andy, I know all of these guidelines and all this stuff is, is your neck of the woods, your specialty. Did you want to hop in and say anything or ask any questions first?
I really don't. I think Ted outlined the process properly. I mean, it sounds like you have to jump through a lot of hoops simply to get rid of some debris, but that's New York these days is there's a lot of characterization, regulatory compliance, waste handling requirements and disposal requirements. There's environmental impact review. So all of that, you know, task one and two, environmental services are going to be required to legally remove that material. And given that there's state oversight on this, it will need to be done and documented properly. And then Rob, as you and I learned more during the Woodsbrook project is actual demolition and removal of debris, the actual construction and disposal is likewise fairly detailed and it's not inexpensive. So yeah, these are, are tasks that unfortunately with waste sitting on the site will, will need to be addressed.
So and that leads to my first question. How confident are you guys that these funds will be enough to handle all of the rigmarole and steps and the various possible material that's there and taking care of it?
Well, I had, one of our specialists actually went out to, you know, look at the site and took a look at it. And volume-wise, it's not a huge amount volume-wise. And I, and I believe we were talking about maybe 50,000 at best in disposal costs. So that'll be, that'll be the main cost. The monitoring will probably be fairly extensive as well. And that we included in, in our proposal as well. So based on what we've seen on the site and what we've seen in the DEC, you know, databases for for storage tanks and, and other information, we are, we're pretty sure that there's enough money in the grant to cover it.
All right, so the supplemental agreement that is in front of us for $33,400 is, that doesn't include whatever the bid comes back at or the removal. It doesn't include the cost of, of the air monitoring or it doesn't include the air monitoring?
We are going to be monitoring for asbestos-containing debris.
Okay. So then you are covering that cost in this. So it's really the cost of the project to pick it up and properly remove it.
Correct.
And you're comfortable with the remaining money in the grants to be able to cover that additional expense?
Well, from what we've seen on the site right now, yes.
Okay. And then the, the 33, four that we're talking about here, are those funds that can also come from the grants?
We haven't verified that, but yes. There for pre-development costs, there is a limitation on the level of pre-development costs. We've had a conversation with Danielle. She was going to get back to us and she hasn't gotten back to us yet. But I think some of the task one and two, I believe, will be, will be able to come out of it. Task three and four are actually considered construction costs. So those would definitely be eligible.
All right, I've asked a lot of questions. Let me open up to the trustees. I do want to come back with one other sort of curveball question for you, but let me open up to the trustees first.
Still feeling a little in over my head, so I'm just listening and taking things in for now.
Totally fine, Deb. And also Neil, if you want to speak up on anything, certainly feel free.
So, so Rob, just maybe to restate things, just to make sure I've got, got everything straight in my head. The funding for this is largely coming from grant money.
Correct.
There may be a portion that we're responsible for. And this is something we're already committed to doing as part of the grant.
It was in the scope of the grant.
And the original plan was for our guys to do it over the summer with our seasonal help, but everything changed with COVID. And I think Neil made the right decision to look into using grant funds to have the removal done instead of his guys who are, you know, overworked, as it is.
In hindsight, had we done that work ourselves, there could have been consequences to that that we may not have been aware of at the time. Is that a fair statement?
We still would have gone through the same procedures that they would go through as, but it would be, you know, whereas B and L will be taking on a lot of the administrative costs and be Andy doing some of this and getting contractors to come in and do the various elements of this. And it'd be more work for myself and anyone else who'd be involved. Andy, is that a fair assumption?
Well, it is. And to, you know, get a little bit more information on demolition work, it, it had been anticipated under the Woodsbrook Home Acquisition Program that village employees would go through training for demolition and there would be equipment available through that program for demolition. And that was anticipated to be happening during the same period of time in 2020. And that unfortunately, we were finishing up some of the closings on the Woods, Woodsbrook project in the early part of 2020. And Rob's correct that, that when the COVID restrictions hit, everything came off the rails on that plan. And so no demolitions of buildings were able to be done in the Woodsbrook program. And as I understand it, this project too would have been completed by, by village personnel properly trained, but that, that likewise didn't happen. So that's why I think this is now in front of the board to actually just transfer some of these tasks to B and L and, and bid it out and have an otherwise qualified demolition firm come in and actually complete the work. I think it's still the village's game plan going forward on demolishing structures acquired through the Woodsbrook project to continue to have employees do that, but that, that's going to take a bit of time.
That was great, Andy. Neil, did you want to say anything else on that? Neil's a strong silent type, so I'll assume that's a no. Or he can't figure out how to unmute it. Either one's fine. But yeah, I agree. And I think it is the right move to move forward with this. I did want to make sure everyone understood sort of what we were going on because there's so many programs and so many grants that are at various different stages. I thought it was important to discuss this out and make sure everyone understood. Trustees, any other questions on this?
No.
No, I'm good, Rob.
Okay. Ted, I have one more sort of curveball question for you. We're working on getting high-speed internet down Waterworks Road, which is becoming quite an issue. Because right now there isn't one. It would be have to, it would be something that a company would have to basically run and they will only run it if there's a certain amount of uses for high-speed internet. One of the high-speed internet uses that we are now wondering if it would be able to fall under the purview of this grant is if we could use high-speed internet to install some security cameras on the greenway. And in this portion of, of the fields of Waterworks Road, just because we have had some issues there. And I think it would be a, a good investment. And I'm wondering if something like that would be able to also fall in under the, the guidelines of this grant and if we would have the funding to support that, to maybe throw, I don't know, I'm just going to throw out like maybe an eight or $11,000 to the infrastructure, maybe as much as $15,000 to the infrastructure side of that.
I will have to check. It sounds like it would be because it is directly related to maintenance and safety on the trail.
Okay, this is something that's come up recently, but we're in the process of, of trying to equip several locations along Waterworks Road, including the old hobby garage, the new hobby garage, the Waterworks location, the greenway, possibly the fields. And there's a certain way that the companies will work with this if there's enough specific locations that will have service. There's a certain credit that they will put forward on the cost of the overall project, which lessens it overall for us. So if you can just shoot me an email and get back to me on that and then we'll start to assuming it's, it's good, we'll start to include you in those discussions and that will be happening over the next couple of weeks. Any other questions or thoughts on that, trustees? Andy, anyone? If not, I'm looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to, let's see if I have this right, execute the supplemental agreement number one related to the southern end of the greenway, the Waterworks Road area.
I'll make the motion, Rob.
Thank you, Bobby.
Second.
Second, Craig. Further discussion?
And Rob, before there's a vote, I think it's important just to confirm on the record that the the tasks identified in the the, let me get the term right, the supplemental number one scope of work, task one and two likely will be covered by the grant and that B and L will, will confirm that. And that tasks three and four can be covered by the grant as they're more in the nature of construction services. And that the actual, it's not part of this, but the actual removal and disposal cost for the debris is also an item that can be covered by the grant.
Great. Thank you, Andy. Any further discussion from the board? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say your name and your vote. Aye.
Bobby, aye.
Yeah, bye.
Craig, aye.
Emily, aye.
All right, five in favor, two absent, passes. Ted, Don, anything else?
No, that's it.
I don't have anything. I don't know if you wanted to talk about anything, Don.
Well, it sounded like I got an update on Woodsbrook. I was curious where a little bit of that stood, but
Yep, I spoke with Denise and that sounds like her Monday objective.
Okay.
Thank you guys very much for, for all the work here and for joining us here this evening. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.
Thanks. Okay, the next part of the meeting, we're going to discuss the engineering proposal regarding the village water treatment plant and landfill. We have online Mark Millsfall of Sterling Environmental as well as David Engel, our environmental attorney. Just as a quick review, the landfill is a class two super fund site that we share responsibilities with Honeywell International. We'll, we'll let the attorneys correct me any of the language issues there, but I don't know if Andy or Dave or Mark wants to take the lead on just a brief explanation on this and what's going on with this.
Hey, Rob. Let, let me, let me start it off. What I think the board is considering tonight is the and this, this is a resolution that pertains to the responsibilities that the village has to repair the leachate collection system at the landfill. The leachate collection system has been in disrepair now for over a year. And when we entered into the consent order with DEC many, many months ago and also entered into a sidebar agreement with Honeywell, it was contemplated that the village would fulfill its responsibilities that were carrying over from the closure order that the village had entered into, into with DEC approximately 25 years ago and get that leachate collection system back up in an operation. And that required getting the leachate pump repaired and reinstalled. And by the time the village was prepared to move ahead with that, the Department of Environmental Conservation came along and said, look, this is now a hazardous waste site. And so in order to do something as mundane as reconnecting and reoperating the leachate collection system, you have to go through what's called an interim remedial measure process because this is a hazardous waste site. And that's when Sterling Environmental was retained. And Mark Millsfall, who's on this, on this conference can, can describe this further. But what was developed was a plan for dealing with the leachate, given that it was contaminated with PFAS chemicals. And now what we have And now what we have to do is get the board's approval so that this process can go ahead and we can get this thing reconnected and get some other things done that have to be done in conjunction with that reconnection. Mark, you want to take it?
Sure. The work consists of installing the village's pump back into the pump station. When the pump station was taken out of service over a year ago, the pump was sent out for repairs. Those repairs have been made. The village was prepared to put the pump back in. But that's when the DEC said the village personnel are not qualified due to the presence of certain contaminants. This work has to be done by contractors that have the appropriate health and safety training and equipment. So we issued a direct request for proposal to six firms that we knew had the specific qualifications to do the work. We decided to do a direct invite rather than an advertisement to expedite this process. And of the six firms, four replied right off the bat that they were too busy or not interested because the scope of work had a number of uncertainties associated with it. I'll get to those in a minute. Two firms did show an interest. One actually came out to look at the site and give it consideration as part of putting their pricing together. And ultimately that firm, Labella, which is Aztec. Aztec was acquired by Labella not too long ago. They submitted a proposal. And the scope of work includes putting the pump back. In order to put the pump in, the chamber needs to be pumped out. Currently, the chamber is covered. There's like three or four inches of water on top of the manway to get in the chamber. I went to the field two weeks ago. It was the day the storm came through. I was able to open the manway, but you can't see anything. Everything is jet black. It's nasty water. And the inability to see things has complicated the ability to get definitive pricing. So the scope of work includes pumping out the chamber, putting the pump back in. And then after we have a chance to inspect the chamber, decide whether or not a flow meter can be installed on the internal piping. You need six feet of straight pipe on the pipe that comes up from the pump to have a valid flow measurement location. If that's not feasible, I asked the contractor to provide pricing to excavate the forest main outside the manhole and attach the flow meter to, you know, externally to the pump station. The flow meter is something that is important for a number of reasons. We want to be able to first and foremost know that the pump station's working. It's not enough just to turn the pump on. You know, ideally we'll see the water level in the pump station go down, but you could also have more water coming in. The system has been inoperable for more than a year and there may be a water backlog of water in the collection system that needs to be worked off. Having a flow meter will tell us directly, you know, what's passing through the pump and into the forest main. Also, as this gets further down the road, the New York State DEC and Honeywell and their consultants need flow measurements in order to evaluate the range of feasible treatment alternatives. Treatment is very flow sensitive. It defines the size of the system that may be needed. And there's a real desire to obtain flow measurements across a number of different seasons. So the sooner we can get a flow meter operable, first and foremost, the village will have the benefit of having data at startup. And then as and would understand how much flow is actually entering into the village wastewater treatment plant, which is something that under your permit, you need to report on in your annual report. But then also it'll generate data that is needed by others. The pricing that I obtained is based on the best available information. The uncertainties that I mentioned previously relates to what's the internal condition of this pump chamber. We know it's full of water. We don't know if there's a layer of muck or sediment on the bottom that needs to be removed before the pump can be installed. We do not know the condition of the electrical components. There's a junction box that the repaired pump has to be connected to. It's been submerged for a year. It's our hope that the wires are intact and by cleaning up the terminals, the repaired pump can be installed and made operational. But that's one of the things that needs to be determined when we open up the chamber and pump it down. And then, as I mentioned earlier, there's a need to decide where and how a meter, flow meter can be installed. There's uncertainty about the diameter of the internal piping. There's a fair degree of confidence that it's probably three inch diameter. But that's going by people's recollections, not by direct measurement. And try as I might, I have not been successful in getting drawings of what's actually been constructed out there. So some of this is seat of the pants. I intend to manage the contractor directly to keep the costs at a minimum. My plan is to start with getting the pump reactivated and then make some informed decisions about what we can do for flow metering. And quite frankly, if flow metering becomes too much of a challenge or too expensive, I'm prepared to go back to the DEC and say we will keep track of pump running time and other parameters, but not actual flow measurements. That's kind of an overview with, I don't know if Andy had anything to add. Karen McQuarrie?
Right, so what I will add, just so the board understands procedurally, Mark talked earlier about preparing the request for proposals and sending that directly out to a number of prospective contractors. So as the board's aware, if the public works contract is anticipated to be over a certain amount and that amount in state statute and your local procurement policy is $35,000, then there would have been the need for advertising requests for proposals and waiting for that whole procedural process to be completed. The anticipated cost of this was below that monetary threshold, which required the village still to comply with the village's procurement policy. And in that policy, if it's under $35,000, more than $10,000, which this proposed project fits within, then an RFP does need to be prepared, which Mark's office did. And you need to solicit for proposals. And the procurement policy does say in a minimum of three proposals needs to be received. But you should be aware that there's a provision in your procurement policy that says when you've made good faith efforts to obtain the three proposals and you've received less than that, that's not an impediment to awarding a contract. So what the record shows here is that the RFP was prepared. It was sent to six qualified firms for proposals. And despite the follow-up undertaken by Sterling and Mark, only one proposal was submitted that, in my opinion, does comply with your procurement policy requirements. So the matter's properly in front of you tonight to consider, based on that record, whether to award the contract. And again, primarily based on Mark's review of the project and his review of that proposal.
I can add also that I've had several emails and telephone calls from New York State DEC inquiring about the status of this work. They're obviously anxious to see the approved interim remedial measures program started. And I think they're paying close attention to this to make sure that this is not some sort of strategic delay game. I've advised them that what I'm seeing on this project and on a couple of others is that remediation contractors are busy at the moment. Slowdowns that occurred earlier in the year have resulted in a backlog of work. And as I mentioned earlier, this work, because of its uncertainties and not knowing if they're going to get everything done in one mobilization, several of the firms just said they're too busy. This is just more aggravation than it's worth. So they weren't going to submit a proposal.
All right, thank you, Dave, Mark, and Andy. Boy, you guys in this meeting did not anticipate such exciting discussions about technical things like this. But no, in all seriousness, this is, I think, a brilliant summary of an issue that at first point seemed like a mundane, simple repair, but has become an extremely more complicated. Trustees, any questions?
So I do have one question. When we reestablish and pump out the current sump, that leachate that's accumulated in the sump, how is that going to be hauled off site? How does that particular, as opposed to what is going to be the normal flow out of the landfill? You know, at a future state, how does that get handled? Does that get treated differently than the normal?
Mark, we're having some connection issues with you. Dave, did you want to take that first?
What this will do at this point is simply restore the situation that existed prior to the pump failure over a year ago, which is to say the leachate will go to the wastewater treatment plant where historically it has been going. Now, that frankly begs a larger question, which will be the subject of further study, which is what is the fate of that leachate after it goes to the sewage treatment plant? Because the sewage treatment plant does not have the capacity to remove the PFOA. And everybody's aware of that issue. And it is part of what Honeywell will be looking at as part of the overall remedial investigation. You know, the bottom line is right now that leachate, when it goes to the sewage treatment plant, gets treated for the conventional sort of contaminants that are in it. But the PFOA ends up being discharged to the river. Now, over the last year or more, while this system has been inoperative, the leachate is still being generated and it's being discharged at the base of the landfill. I guess that's on the west side of the landfill in an uncontrolled manner. And the working supposition, I think of everyone who's looked at it, is that that uncontrolled leachate by one means or another is also migrating to the river. But this is the first step in getting control over that. And it's the first step in what might be a fairly long journey to determine what to do with all of this in the long run.
Thanks, Steve. I was actually asking about specifically what's in the sump currently, that particular stuff. If we have to handle that any differently than the leachate.
The DEC has approved removing it by back truck and delivering it to the wastewater treatment plant. And that's a benefit to the village because taking it anywhere else would require extensive additional testing.
Right.
Disposal.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Trustees? Neil, anyone else?
Good.
All right, I know that was a lot of technical stuff, but it's an important topic. And frankly, it's a topic that we're going to be following for several years in the village. Andy, I know you already spoke pretty extensively about all of the various whereas clauses in this resolution. And I reviewed them over the screen as we were talking. Is there anything in particular you want me to read on this resolution awarding contract and authorizing work to proceed?
Rob, I think my earlier discussion with the resolution recital clauses obviously recounts the village's ownership of the landfill originally closed several years ago. The issue about the PFOA in the landfill arose recently. The department identified then enlisted the site as a hazardous waste. Honeywell is involved in the remedial investigation. And now the need for repair of the existing pump for the leachate collection system has come up. The department required the IRM, the interim remedial measure, which was then approved by the department. And the recital clauses then generally describe the compliance with the procurement for this particular proposed public works contract with Labella that Mark's office has had a chance to review the proposal and recommends that an award be made. It will be in compliance with the requirements of the approved IRM and that it will be in compliance with the village's procurement policy. That's enough of the recitals. I think you can then read the body of the resolution.
All right, great. Thank you. And Dave is a new trustee. I've been at this for almost four years and my head's still spinning with all of the various acronyms and such. So we're all there. We're all there. All right. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village, who's called in special session due to convenience follows. One, the Board of Trustees hereby awards a contract to Labella Associates, DPC formerly Aztec Environmental, for the scope of services and fees set forth in the proposal prepared by Labella Associates, DPC dated October 16, 2020, and revise October 19, 2020 for the installation of a repaired pump in the existing village municipal land leachate pumping station and further authorizes Labella Associates to proceed with the completion of such work upon compliance with filing the necessary insurance certificates with the ability to follow the compliance of the above referenced RFP. So at this point, I am looking for someone to offer the resolution. All right, I heard Emily first. I'll have Emily as the offer. Bobby, do you want to be the second?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions on this?
Just want to make sure that everybody, this is a state mandate. We have no choice in this regard, correct? DEC is dictating we repair this.
I mean, this has to be repaired and there's a lot of technical things that have to happen because of the super fund status, Andy, pretty much, right?
In my opinion, yes. Bobby, this does need to be repaired. And the department has directed the manner in which it has to be repaired, resulting in this approved interim remedial measure work plan. Dave, did I say that accurately?
I think that's absolutely correct. And this is a repair that would have to have been done in one way or another, with or without the designation of the landfill as hazardous waste site. The hazardous waste site designation makes it more involved. But the village has been obligated to maintain this system ever since it entered into a consent order with DEC back in the mid 90s to originally close the landfill.
Right. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All right, in that case, I'm looking for a roll call vote. Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley is absent. Trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis is absent. Trustee Marpy?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
And I will also be voting yes. So passes you down this slate. All right, thank you very much. Mark, thank you very much for being on. Dave, thank you very much for being on. Appreciate it. All right, thank you very much. Uh, Mark, thank you very much for being on. Dave, thank you very much for being on. Appreciate it, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.
All right, uh, our last item, oh, let me switch my uh share here one second. Back to this, our last item is discussion regarding the hiring of a part-time seasonal. DPW employee, uh, as well as uh hiring of a part-time village office cleaner. Uh, a couple of things. Number one, anytime we get into personnel, if we need to discuss details and we have to go into executive session. Um, I I don't know if we'll need to, and if if a trustee wants to, that it's not a big deal, so please certainly ask for that. Um, I I will say that um. I can, Andy, I can talk about just generally background check and and stuff like that, right?
Uh, certainly that one was completed, yep, and and issues were noted.
So one was completed, no issues were noted. Uh, it's Neil's recommendation and my recommendation that we move forward. With hiring this individual for both of these positions, a part-time seasonal DPW employee. As well as um our replacements um uh to clean the village office building. So uh, we'll do those one at a time, but let me open up with any questions from the trustees. Okay, uh, hearing none. Um, Andy, uh. Are we okay to allow Neil and Denise to work out how many hours a week we have in terms of budget for seasonal DPW employee and stuff? Or do we need to limit it or set it here with the motion?
Uh, I think you should have a not to exceed number. If if you know what that is. Do you have any designation within your um, whether it be employee manual or or anything that identifies maximum hours for part-time work?
We probably do when I don't know it and Marie uh is not here to answer that.
So I I I concur that there will be a formal definition or designation of what a part-time employee is versus full-time. And that always includes a number of hours that that can be worked. So maybe go just reference in your motion, if you're inclined to um approve hiring the person. That each of these positions is a part-time position, compliance with the village's um policy on part-time employees.
Okay, when we make the motion, we're allowed to use the name, uh, correct?
Uh, you you should absolutely identify the name when you're hiring.
Okay. Trustees, any issues, any questions? I need to move to executive.
I have no questions.
No, I have none.
I'm good.
Okay. Uh, in that case, does somebody want to offer the motion to start with just the hire of the seasonal part-time employee not to exceed um hours specified as part-time? Distinction?
I'll make that motion.
All right, uh, Emily, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Deb. Uh, further discussion? All in favor, uh, say, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to state the name. This will be to hire Damian Lewis, geez. Um, as uh our part-time seasonal DPW employee uh to to start effective immediately. So my my apologies on not forgetting that part of the motion. Um, any other, any other questions, discussion? Okay, all in favor? I'm an eye.
Great guy.
Hi.
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 All right, all opposed or abstentions? Uh, I think it was unanimous. Yes, it was, so it's all set. Also, I'm looking for a motion to hire Damian Lewis uh to become our new uh part-time uh village office building cleaner.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Bobby. Need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Emily. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 And uh opposed or abstentions? Okay, Craig, did you vote? I did not hear you.
I voted, but I was muted. Aye.
All right, great, thank you. All right, um, then uh, uh, that is it. Um. Uh, any other business trustees that need to come forward?
Uh, Rob, I do have one question, which is at this point, if you know. Uh, your November regular board meeting, do you anticipate that to be in-person or virtual? And the reason I raise that is uh, the board is going to be holding their public hearing. Uh, on local law number two on the parking lot regulation, and I just need to know. How to prepare the notice of public hearing, whether it'll be in person or virtual.
In all honesty, and I want the board's thoughts on this, I think the right move is to do it virtually, because I think that provides the most accessibility.
I agree.
I agree as well.
Yep.
I, I agree.
All right, great, then we will make that decision now. Andy, thank you for bringing that up. Uh, in that case, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, everyone else, all in favor.
Aye.
I opposed.
Aye.
Thank you guys very much. Meeting uh is adjourned at seven oh eight P M.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. And good night Facebook. And good night Emily and Harold. We're still connected. I'll be ending the meeting, so uh, I'll be kicking you off. See you later.